Next up for public testimony, we will have Milan Masbahi, followed by Christine Tang and Chia Wang.
Hello? Oh, okay, it's on. Sorry. Okay.
One moment. I just need to reconvene us from recess. There you go. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Milan Masbahi and I'm a student at Ingram High School. How does education look today? Is it used to enhance our understanding of reality or to push certain agendas and ideas forward? We as a society have placed value and trust within our public education system to foster critical thinking and teach students various areas of knowledge that prepare them for future careers and endeavors they may pursue. But this is not occurring. Instead, we see a Eurocentric narrative being continuously pushed in the flourishing of a curriculum that is centered around the success of white and privileged students. Students of color are thus left with a limited understanding of themselves and their identities. You all, however, can change this. Ethnic Studies serves as a counter-narrative that is actively anti-racist and will serve as a curriculum that will combat the microaggressions and stereotypes that have blossomed from the apathy and ignorance of our current education system. Throughout my educational experience, I've seen the discrepancies that exist within Seattle Public Schools. Finding inspiration and learning is one of the most important things when it comes to student growth, yet students of color rarely learn about the figures and the stories of their cultures or ethnic groups that allow them to see themselves in history. Because of our current curriculum, we see blatant racism in our classrooms, both in structure and thought. Segregation within our schools where students of color feel like our education system doesn't value their learning. And a colonized curriculum that ignores the indig- indigeneity of people and knowledge. Some people look at Ethnic Studies and describe it as a multiculturalist education that serves no purpose with the acquisition of actual knowledge. This could not be farther from the truth, however. Ethnic Studies is not a standalone high school course that simply studies specific ethnic groups or an act of inclusivity, but is a holistic narrative of our world and history that serves to reverse the social and intellectual pitfalls that were created and perpetuated by a current education system. I challenge you all to reflect on your roles as school board directors and the responsibility you have in incorporating Ethnic Studies throughout K through 12 education if you truly value the growth and knowledge of students and society. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Tang.
Good evening. I support Ethnic Studies in SPS. I also support Amendment 1 to the Board Action Report. It is extremely inequitable to deny the students in Central Seattle and the South End access to a cohort pathway. This is Seattle's most diverse cohort, where the majority, 53% of students, are students of color. This amendment would not take anything away from the high-cap families in the South End and Central Seattle. It would open a gate instead to an opportunity they currently do not have without this amendment. It's an option, not a mandate. I'm not here to uphold the status quo. For too long, the district process of accessing high-cap services has been the equivalent of a secret handshake for those in the know discriminating against students who are Black and Brown, English language learners, low-income, and twice exceptional, those children who are gifted and have learning disabilities or other disabilities, who are neurodivergent or differently wired. The Advanced Learning Task Force's recommendations address all these inequities and call for advanced learning opportunities in every school as well as immediate action when student needs are identified. But you have to identify them. Advanced learning services are required for gifted kids because gifted kids are not better, they're not superior. They simply present differences in the way they learn, the speed at which they acquire information and retain information, the social-emotional support they need. I'm appalled at the erasure of gifted and Black, Black and POC students from the policy discussions. Your discussions have centered white students and how their families circumvent and take advantage of the system. I want you to center the Black and Brown gifted students on what they need in SPS. Have you asked their parents what they need? Those Black and Brown students who tested in despite, despite biases, implicit and explicit, despite bias testing,
Please conclude your remarks.
Despite the barriers. I wanted to center those two E Black and Brown students
Please conclude your remarks.
who are now in ESL classrooms.
You're eating into everybody else's time. Please conclude your remarks.
Those classrooms where they do not get access to academic instruction.
Please call up the next speaker.
Next up, we have Chia Wang, followed by Hugh Kim, and then Chris Jackins.
Chia.
Chia.
Thank you. Thank you. Please, it eats into everybody else's public comment time that they've signed up for. Thank you. We have heard you. This is disrespectful to other people's public comment time. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
I have two points and a request. The first point is that the HC cohort, while flawed in many ways, as indicated by some of our signs, is a highly successful academic program. The students at Garfield consistently lead the city in academic metrics and go on to some of the best colleges in the country. At a time when the US is having trouble competing academically on the world stage, I don't want us to forget that Seattle Public Schools, through the HC cohort, provides an education that ranks among the best in the country. My second point, though, is that just because HCC parents don't want to see the cohort disbanded does not mean that we are against TAF. TAF looks like a great program. But we are being asked to take a leap of faith in the name of equity, and while that may be the noble thing to do, we worry about our children. And we are concerned that the district is disregarding the recommendations of the Advanced Learning Task Force. I know that the perception is that HC families are sitting on mountains of privilege, but for the most part, what that translates into on a day-to-day basis is two parents working full-time, struggling with our mortgages, trying to educate our children in a challenging world. Yes, we have options and opportunities, but not as many as the school board seems to assume that we have, especially at this late date. The school board is prioritizing the needs of underserved students, and that is as it should be. My request is that you approach this issue with some flexibility and some empathy for the HC students who are also in your charge. We appreciate that Amendment 1 may provide an option, but the geographic distance is a hardship. My request is that the 6th grade cohort be allowed to remain at WMS during a transition period while we digest the recommendations of the task force and we get used to TAF and TAF gets used to us. After all, there will still be 7th and 8th grade HC cohorts at WMS. Any decision about the middle school HC cohort should be made across the entire district after the task force's recommendations have been considered.
Thank you very much.
For all public schools, uplifting the struggling students of color should be a priority. But serving the needs of those who are advanced should be equally as important. Public education, as a democratic entity, has an obligation to address the needs of all families, Black, White, Asian, Latinx, and Native people of color. SPS's plan to disrupt the cohort model in the South End by mixing them in general classes will have a negative impact. Struggling students are SPS's top priority, which means their needs will be the focus and attention of teachers in classrooms, which will stunt the growth of advanced students. In a rush to level the field for those who are underprivileged, the SPS is ignoring the children who are working hard to excel. There is no plan, no direction for children in HCC South End. It's like you're telling these kids, "Look, you have rich white parents, even if you're not rich or white. Just deal with it." That is not justice in education. That goes against the purpose of a public education institution. Allow our South End cohorts to stay together. Vote yes on Amendment 1.
Thank you.
After Chris Jackins, we will have Brian Terry, followed by Sarah Jones, and then John Persak.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124, on the Joint Operating Agreement between Seattle Public Schools and Technology Access Foundation, TAF. Seven points. Number 1, Washington Middle School will be co-managed by the district and TAF. Number 2, some members of the school board have claimed that the TAF program will technically not be a charter school. This dodges the issue. Number 3, what is being proposed is to have a private company operate a public school. Number 4, board members are elected to help oversee the operations of public schools. Number 5, please consider the following amendment. TAF and Seattle Public Schools will not accept funding of the Washington Middle School TAF project from donors who contributed more than $1,000 to the state charter school initiative. Number 6, I am including a list of seven areas in which the TAF proposal appears to violate state law. Number 7, instead of TAF, please reopen the African-American Academy and Indian Heritage High School. Please vote no. On school board oversight, four points. Number 1, when adopting curricula, state law requires the board approve the members of the Instructional Materials Committee, the IMC. Number 2, at a court hearing last week, the district's outside attorney got the judge to make a finding that the word "approval" means "tacet approval", that the board vote, that no board vote is required on IMC members. Number 3, the same word "approval" is also used in the same statute with regard to curricula. Number 4, your attorneys have thereby apparently established that no board vote is required on curricula. You can all go on vacation. Please insist that your attorneys appeal this court finding. For decades, the board allowed three minutes per person for public testimony. This board allows only two minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. In Brown versus the Board of Education, Chief Justice Earl Warren warned that serving Black students in racially segregated classrooms generates a feeling of inferiority as to their status in the community that may affect their hearts and minds in a way unlikely ever to be undone. The reverse has also been well documented. Desegregation provides significant benefit to underprivileged students. It is estimated that spending 12 years in integrated classrooms is enough to completely overcome the Black-white educational attainment gap. And yet, at many of our pathway schools, we continue to place mostly white, highly capable classrooms next to mostly Black neighborhood classrooms. Martin Luther King Jr. spoke about the difficulty of desegregation in his letter from a Birmingham jail. "I have yet to engage in a direct-action campaign that was well-timed in the view of those who have not suffered unduly from the disease of segregation. For years now, I have heard the word 'wait.' It rings in the ear of every Black person with piercing familiarity. This 'wait' has almost always meant 'never.' We must come to see with one of our distinguished jurists that justice too long delayed is justice denied. Please, find a way to serve our highly capable students without racial segregation." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Jones. I'm a female minority and I'm a graduate of the Advanced Placement Program, also known as a highly capable cohort, at Washington Middle School. I'm here today to tell you the program changed my life. Prior to APP, I grew up with a single mother and a low-income household. I was a student who was unintentionally disruptive with mediocre grades. In class, I would finish my work early, sit bored, and talk to other students. When I was nine, my mother married and we moved to the Seattle Public School District, one of the best things that happened to me. I had an awesome teacher, Sheri, who recognized that I was, in fact, not a mediocre student. I was bored and needed to be challenged in an environment that went at the speed of my brain. She recommended to my parents that I test for APP. In 6th grade, I entered APP at Washington, where I was finely challenged and fully engaged. I became a straight A student who learned about her own brilliance for the first time. My parents did not graduate from college, but I went on to earn a graduate degree on full scholarship from University of Michigan. I have founded a startup, been honored in Puget Sound Business Journal's 40 Under 40, and now run an innovation team at a Fortune 50 aerospace company. I am a Black woman leader in tech and I'm a proud product of the Seattle Public Schools. I am proud of the exemplary education I received through the HTC model. I would not be where I am today without it. I'm not alone. Many of my minority colleagues have gone on to be doctors, authors, lawyers, musicians, and more. It breaks my heart to hear that little boys and girls like I was, whose brains work differently, may not get the opportunity to learn in an environment that's right for them and will help them realize their brilliance. I urge you to keep the HTC model and let's work together to fix the issues with access and to ensure all teachers have the opportunity and that we train more, I say, all children have the opportunity and we train more teachers to be like Sheri's, who can recognize highly capable students when they show up differently.
Thank you.
After John Persak, we will have Fatumata Sakho, followed by Dion Malastesta, and then Joanna Cullen.
Honorable board members and superintendent, over the past several months, I'm hearing that this district's administration does not understand neurodiversity and wishes to publicly demonize highly capable children. This is a form of institutionalized child abuse. Manufactured brilliance is a terminology that is fundamentally anti-science and an alternative fact. I was in Olympia today to support Senate Bill 6282. The legislation does not call for IEPs for gifted children. Please, stop misleading the public on this and stop pitting special ed parents against other parents. You wish to dismantle highly capable learning without a plan, without a destination. Do not mislead the public into believing that neighborhood schools are equipped to pick up the slack. We all know the truth. You don't need to press pause. You need to press reset on this. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Fatumata and I'm here to support Amendment 1. I think it would make more sense to add more HTC pathways in the South and Central areas of Seattle, where there are more students of color and who has been disqualified to access advanced learning services in HTC for many years. Why am I talking about that? I'm a parent who have been navigating the testing system for many years for my current 9th and 8th graders, before realizing that being an ESL, being an immigrant, or lacking resources can automatically disqualify you from these advanced learning programs. English is my fourth language. And when I came to America, I already spoke it, though, because we had English at school. And I tried to support my kids at home for many years before sending them to public schools. Why did I do that? I did it because I believed in a democratic society introduced to me through books and media at school and at college back in my home country. I believed in an equitable educational system that would recognize its students' strengths, potential, and challenges and meet their needs at any level. Providing more advanced learning opportunities for students of color is the first step to educational justice. This is possible by introducing the opportunities from preschool to elementary and through middle school. How can we do that? I think we could do that by providing tools to teachers to communicate better to parents, resources that are available for their children, whether they're brown, black, or white. I might be wrong, but I have witnessed frustration and discouragement many times in parents whose students are denied access to an equitable education, whether it's in the classroom, in the athletic field, or elsewhere in their learning journeys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dion.
Good evening. As it is fairly clear that the TAF/SPS joint operating agreement will be approved tonight, and this will push forward the dismantling of the highly capable cohort, I ask that you spend some time educating yourselves about the needs and challenges of cognitively atypical and twice exceptional children and the real documented risks of not providing them with an appropriate learning environment. Note that when I say "you", I am not talking just about the board, but anyone with decision-making power in Seattle Public Schools. Please also educate yourselves on how these risks are magnified for Black and Brown cognitively atypical children, the children that have been ignored for decades in Seattle Public Schools and the children you are purporting to help by dismantling the cohort. The work of Dr. Joy Lawson Davis, Dr. Donna Ford, Dr. Tarik Grantham, and other scholars of color who understand the needs of cognitively atypical children of color is important reading as you reimagine how cognitively atypical children will be served and identified in Seattle Public Schools. The process of bringing TAF to Washington Middle School did not have to be so contentious. If the district had chosen to recognize that cognitively atypical kids have real needs and challenges as a result of their atypicality and honored the real fears and concerns of families instead of denigrating them, perhaps we could have had a more productive and healing discussion around meeting the needs of all students equitably instead of pitting communities against each other and ignoring those at the intersections. By using rhetoric such as manufactured brilliance and opportunity hoarding, you have helped create an environment where it's okay for an adult to attack a student in this room in full view of the dais. Given that my time is almost up, I want to say lastly, please vote for the Black Lives Matter resolution and I urge you to move faster to implement the demands of the Black Lives Matter at-school movement. Your work is just beginning. There is healing to be done, as well as delivering on your promises. Thank you.
Thank you.
After Joanna Cullen, we will have Gian Niccolo Mazzario, followed by Emily Wheeler and Dustin Wonderlich.
Hi, I'm Joanna Cullen and I'm a member of the community. And I'm mainly here to speak about my concerns about the anger and frustration in the community when process does not seem to be followed. I watched the hearing today on 6282 and I think it is about process. Process is supposed to empower us to know how to engage with our government agencies, our elected officials. And so, so much of this process has been backed up, turned around, not very clear and not transparent. And of course, then people become angry and frustrated and seem to be set against each other. And somebody said, "You cannot be set against each other unless you're already against each other." I do not believe that that is true in my community, that we can come together if a process is followed. And I would like this new board to really consider carefully the process by which they transition students of any ability or any program to a new program. And this has not been followed. I also noticed that even tonight, in the consent agenda, the approval of a purchase for TAF was approved before this, before the actual TAF is voted to be accepted. That's, I mean, that doesn't seem like an approval process. I can't believe I haven't used up all my time. There are so many issues here, but I'm not here to say how these services should be delivered, but a recognition of the need is necessary.
Thank you, Joanna. And just to clarify, there was not anything on the consent agenda. It was a student and staff technology purchase for Bexford School, so, thank you. Next.
Gian.
Hello, my name is Gian. I graduated. First, I'd like, right from your beach. First, I'd like to thank our school board members for the resolution, which declares that Black students matter and encourage our teachers to participate in the National Black Lives Matter at-School Week. I also appreciate that the resolution acknowledges the historical injustice towards our Black and Brown students. But today, that injustice continues in our education system. For example, mandating Ethnic Studies is one of the demands of the movement, yet our school district does not explicitly name Ethnic Studies in our strategic plan. Another example of this injustice is the amendment being considered tonight, which would continue segregation in our schools. The amendment uses language such as "self-contained cohort". Our students deserve to have the same access to opportunities and our students deserve to learn together in the same classroom. So with that, I urge our school board members not to support this amendment and I urge our district to explicitly name Ethnic Studies in our strategic plan and make Ethnic Studies a priority. This is my closing remark. During our first weeks, during the first weeks at Seattle Public Schools, you invited students and discussed things about our schools and I asked you, what services do students deserve that some students don't? So now I ask the same for our board members and I ask you to reflect tonight before voting on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's great to see you back here.
Hi, Emily Wheeler. Here to talk a little bit about Washington Middle School, as many of us have. Washington Middle School is essentially a Title I school and a special needs school. It's been a blended school for many years and it's been a blended school that hasn't had enough funding. Many of the core classes have over 40 kids. Forty kids. This is eight beyond what is allowed by the teacher contract. We've been told, "This is fine. They just pay the teachers more." The teachers are frustrated. This is why Washington Middle School does not do as well as it could, because it is underfunded. And now the district has found money to pay TAF when you haven't been able to find the money for years to pay the teachers to get the class sizes down. It's Title I school, we have special needs. We have two groups that work together, that play together, that do well together, but the classes are too big. And now you can find money for TAF? This makes no sense. TAF should go to a different school where you guys think about it a little bit more, bring it into HTC. As you've heard, are you listening to the Black and Brown families that are up here telling you, "This is the pathway. This is where their kids go." You guys are not serving the minority community, you're not serving the South End. Bringing TAF in and pretending that this is going to be okay is not going to work. My son currently, right now, the kids, I don't know if you know, art, gym, music, history, those are all blended classrooms right now at Washington Middle School. The kids are in classes together and they get to know each other. They are in different classes when it comes to math and English and science. And what's frustrating, so the school's 2/3, 1/3. So you've got, for example, the history class is 15 kids, gen ed kids, and 25 kids HC kids. Yes, that adds up to 40 kids. You can imagine it's frustrating for the teacher. But this is such an imbalance and you're just continuing this imbalance by bringing in TAF. So I'd like to ask you, Why suddenly do you have the money? You haven't had the money for years. You need to fix this.
Please conclude your remarks. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dustin Wonderlich, and then Yvonne Hubbard.
Hello, I'm Dustin Wonderlich, Director of Communications for the University of Washington College of Education, reading a letter on behalf of Mia Tuon, Dean of the College. Dear board members, as Dean of the University of Washington College of Education, I can attest to the impact of TAF and its efforts over 20-plus years to realize social change and educational equity for low-income communities and communities of color in our region. I urge you to support partnering with TAF to further advance this collective work for our young people. TAF Academy's successes have achieved both local and national recognition for enlisting students as active participants in their own education, ensuring each student has the knowledge and experience to use to use STEM as a tool for positive social change, starting in their own community. TAF is dedicated cultivating strong partnerships with students and families, as well as with districts, higher education, and business, to provide career-connected learning experiences. The UW College of Education and TAF have been long-term partners in creating educational opportunities for underserved communities. To name one example, UW and TAF partnered on a multi-year NSF grant to design and study curriculum that engages culturally and linguistically diverse middle and high school students in the investigation of real-world contemporary STEM topics. This work illustrates TAF Academy's success in preparing students to thrive in a rigorous and relevant learning environment rooted in project-based learning practices, exactly the kind of preparation that is essential for today's college and career-bound students. TAF shares Seattle Public Schools' commitment to ensuring every child achieves to their highest level and graduates ready for college, career, and life. By joining together, we can make greater progress toward educational justice for those communities who have for too long been furthest from it. Sincerely, Mia Tuon, Dean, University of Washington College of Education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yvonne?
Hello, again. This will be my third time talking, and I hope that you guys can hear me and hear us behind me, because I'm here and I'm hearing these kids. They're asking for ethnic studies. Why are we begging for ethnic studies? Why, there's so many whys about the district. But I also, I would love to tell you my daughter's story, but I only have a minute and thirty-seven seconds left. But I can shortly tell you that before my child was in HCC, her teacher continuously told me she was autistic, and that she wasn't as smart as she was. We donated books to the classroom that she had already read. I was told she couldn't read them. My daughter's been doing multiplication since she was three. I was told that wasn't true. And I really would like, I really would like us to stop telling each other and believing that, like, Black children can't be gifted, because it's harmful. It's harmful. There's so many of, I just want to say, if we would test more children, especially ones that you feel have behavioral problems, you probably would find that they are gifted. I support the amendment, because that means that some of the children, and it's not enough. There needs to be more of us, there needs to be better representation. Everyone who gets up and talks and says HCC is broken, they're correct. Every, all of these children here asking for quality education, they are correct. All of the kids deserve that. My child deserves it. And I hope you hear us this time. I hope you hear that we do exist, and that disbanding the cohort in the South End, when there is a plan for the North End, I wouldn't be standing up here talking if you guys had a plan to do multi-tiered learning, like you say. I went to a CSEC meeting that said there was a plan, but this plan isn't happening in the South End, it's going to happen in the North End. How come our children don't get this option to have, like, a prepared system? If you don't have teacher training, you cannot teach to low students and high students.
Thank you. Please conclude your remarks.
All children should be at standard, at least. So don't let them get to middle school before you try to make changes. And you know what? Please don't walk away when we're talking. There is, you know, there's so many of us who don't get to have a voice.
And when we go over time, it cuts into every other person's time. Thank you. Please conclude your remarks.
I will stand here and make sure you get to talk. Yes, but my point is, is that this, this system is broken. You need to do something about it, and you need to stop walking away from us when we're trying to talk to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This concludes the sign-up list for public testimony this evening.
That concludes our public testimony for the meeting. Thank you to all who have attended and shared your testimony tonight. While we are not able to respond individually to each speaker who has joined us, I do want to share gratitude for you taking your time to be here to address the board. So I'm going to move us to the consent, the items pulled from consent. So we'll now move on to those items that were moved from the consent agenda. So, the agenda item was number four, BTA4, Approval of Capacity Management Actions for the 2020-21 School Year. This, I'll ask the VP to make a motion.
I move approval of BTA4, Approval of Capacity Management Actions for the 2020-21 School Year.
And the motion?
I'm going to ask our Ops Committee Chair to, what was the recommendation again? This was for approval, correct?
Yeah, this item came through for approval. It's been updated since introduction, because there was a typo on the dollar amounts. And the reason that I pulled it was because it was corrected in two places, but not in the third place, in the fiscal.
So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Podesta. If you have, we'd love you to share about the revisions or any new info since introduction.
No, this was Chief Operations Officer Fred Podesta.
Just one moment. If folks are still continuing conversation, I just, if, I can encourage you to please go into the lobby. I want to make sure we get through the business portion of this meeting, and get home, people home, at a reasonable hour, so, okay. Chief Podesta, thank you.
This was discussed comprehensively in committee and also at introduction. There was an error in the motion. The amount was, didn't match the exhibits. Once the numbers were refined, there was a hundred thousand dollar difference. As Director Mack points out, that was corrected in the motion. It also needs to be corrected in the fiscal portion of the bar. My understanding from our legal counsel is that no amendment needs to be made. The motion is correct, we can correct the other citation administratively, and the exhibits are correct.
Does that satisfy the kind of concern from raising it out of the consent? Director Mack?
Yes, that's the only concern. I just wanted to make sure that that typo was corrected.
Thank you for calling that out. Do any directors have any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, will Ms. Shek roll call, please?
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Rankin? Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you. I do want to call out one. I'd heard a couple of our students from the NAACP Youth Coalition. I just want to clarify something. Our February 5th, excuse me, our February 5th regularly scheduled legislative meeting, which this is here every other Wednesday, is actually not going to be taking place until February 26th, because we don't have any items to bring up from committees because of the snow. So we are postponing, and the next meeting won't be till the 26th. So it'll be right after the, I think it's the mid-winter break. Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify, if you show up on the 5th, I don't want you to feel bad that there's nobody here. But we will be here on the 26th for our regularly scheduled. It should be updated on the website. And again, that's because we had snow days, and we had no committee meetings really in December or January, so there's not a lot of new stuff, and so, I do apologize, but I want to make sure you knew that, because you mentioned that. Of course. Okay, so now we have come to the Board Comments section of the agenda. I'm going to ask again, just given the, obviously, the really packed action item agenda, if we could just keep these two comments that are kind of relevant to anything you need to announce, or anything that's kind of burning critical needs, and then if there's any of the comments that pertain to the relevant agenda item, just to reserve those for that portion. So, Director Rankin?
I'm going to keep my comments pretty short. I feel like the last two weeks since the last board meeting have just, like, flown by. I can barely remember what I have to reflect on. But I did want to say that one of the highlights of the last couple of weeks, besides having six puppies at my house, is, was, six, because one got adopted, attending the annual MLK Day at Garfield High School, where I was very privileged to attend the workshop led by many of the youth that are here right now, the NAACP Youth Council, and introduce myself to ones that maybe I hadn't met before. And what the main, well, the main takeaway that I got was, first of all, how incredibly brave and forward our high school students are. I mean, I'm stammering up here right now, and I'm forty-one, and I'm not getting really my thoughts across very well. But the main thing, I asked them, you know, what as our, what as a school board we could do to support them? And the thing that I heard was to include students more. One student noted that there's, we have someone sitting here on the end of the dais, but it's a little bit performative, it's not quite the right word, but it's great to give them that recognition and a chance to share, but it's not very integrated into the rest of what our policy looks like, or getting, you know, giving student voice or student insight into how the process happens. So I heard the desire to be included when there are opportunities for input, and it makes a lot of sense to me, since every decision that we make is for and about them. So I'm definitely interested. If any of you are interested in curriculum and instruction, I chair that committee, and I would be more than happy to have your perspective and your presence in some of those conversations. And it was a great, it was a great day. I really enjoyed being there with my fellow directors, and my sons, and my husband. And that's, that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thanks, Director Hersi.
Also, had a great time at the MLK event over at Garfield High School. I think that when I think about the second graders that I teach every day, I hope they are just as active and just as engaged as the young people that we see sitting in front of us. They are repeatedly here, telling us the truth about their experience, and we have so much to learn from them, and so much right to do by them. And I am so looking forward to continuing to partner with them to figure out, how do we solve some of these issues that we're talking about? How do we incorporate the demands of the Black Lives Matter at School movement into actual concrete policy? So you have a supporter in me, and I know so many other of our colleagues at this dais, around figuring this out, but y'all are going to be a crucial part, so that we not only do this, but we do it right? And let's have continued conversations about what that looks like. I did also want to mention that our de-escalation training and community event that was previously scheduled got interrupted by the snow. It has officially been rescheduled, and I want to take this opportunity to invite you all. It is going to be on February 24th. It's a Monday, same time, same place, 6:30 at New Holly. I hope that you can attend, and I look forward to seeing many of you there, hopefully. Community meetings are coming up, and I will save the rest of my comments for the appropriate legislation.
Thank you. Director Hersi. Other directors? Director Harris?
Again, heartfelt thanks for being here, for telling your truths, for standing up, getting counted, for the probably thousands of emails. Most of them extraordinarily thoughtful, some of them not so much. Read them all, can't respond to them all. But please know that this director, and I believe my colleagues, read every darn one of them. Community meetings, this Saturday, 3:00 to 5:00, January 24, Dell Ridge Library. Ay yi yi. February 15, 3:00 to 5:00, West Seattle Branch Library. March 21, 3:00 to 5:00, High Point Branch Library. We're back in the lasagna rotation, you've got a thirty-three and a third chance. Also, I have office hours, Wednesdays at 7:00 AM. Please contact the board office if you would like that opportunity. And my phone number is on the website, and I'm known to buy coffee and other libations, if you'd like to get together. Saturday, I unfortunately was not able to come to the MLK Day in March and workshops. But I did make it down here to the School Enrollment Fair, where alternative schools, and notice that I use the word "alternative," not "option." I would go to my grave not using the word "option." That's a watered-down term. And if you know me, and have known me very long, you know that is one of my highest advocacy issues, and probably one of my highest pain points, because we are not working with widgets, we are working with students. And alternative learning is critical, because our students are not widgets. Are some alternative learnings more expensive? Yes. And then I go back to my tried-and-true line with Chief Financial Officer Jolynn Bergy and her extraordinarily capable staff, and say, "Where on the spreadsheet do lives that get saved get counted?" In any event, this room was packed and rocking, and it was critically important. And four years ago, we started doing these presentations, and every year, it's gotten better, and it made me very proud of our district. And please spread the word, with student enrollment coming up, that we do, in fact, have choices, and that folks need to avail themselves to those choices in lottery systems. It is not a cut-and-paste education. I'm just going to put this right out here. We had folks testifying in Olympia. And because of the legalities of testimony in front of legislative bodies, they had to testify. "I am a school director, I am a superintendent, but I am here testifying personally." My desire, and you all may disagree with me, Lord knows that disagreements can be very constructive and healthy, but in the future, when bills like this pop up that are critically important, I'd prefer that we called an emergency board meeting and passed a resolution, so that we do, in fact, have the authority of our elected offices behind our testimony. And that would also assist us on intra-board communication as well. And I so hope, and you know I'm going home to watch TVW tonight, that the words "unfunded mandate" came up often. It is a real bear to be sitting up here, having bills passed every which way but lose, some of them very good, some of them well-intentioned but poorly written. But when they don't come with money, again, I call fake news. Huge thank you to the Green Lake Dragons, Kokeva. That was beyond. And to our students who show up and testified, and are frustrated and disappointed with us, you have right to be. You have absolute right to be. Ethnic studies is going way too slow. It is not well-funded. And we have to change that. And should we not be able to carve out the funds and the program with the assistance of staff, then I submit to you all here at the dais, we need to pass board resolutions and line item budget and make it happen. And I don't like saying that, because it sounds non-collaborative. But three years is a long time to wait, and we've had some significant missteps getting here. We've made progress. Are we doing enough? No. Are we going deep enough? No. Are we going fast enough? No, no, and no. And to put history in perspective, and not to equate it, please recall that this is the forty-fifth anniversary of the decision in Roe v. Wade, and that last week, Virginia finally passed the Equal Rights Amendment. Most of my old life I've been waiting for to happen. We can't continue doing business this way. It doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. Other directors? Director Hampson?
Apologies for the false start on my prior comments. Which is good, that Director will stop me, because I didn't get a chance to do my inter, in my official introduction. Hanatchini Karaguiwina, Hochak Rajra, Henukadreidega, Hingairena, Makate Rajra, Chandra Hampsonga, Hingare, Hingairena. And that will now officially be translated, I hope, on this version, because I have provided that language. I greet you all. My name is Henukadreidega in Hochank and Chandra Hampson in English. So I was expounding about turtle and coyote and skunk, and skunk. And Skunk, uh, Turtle asked, uh, Skunk to show his, his powers when he got into the, to the canoe with them and he, um, his powers were so strong, if you know what Skunk's powers are, that he knocked him clean out of the, out of the canoe. Uh, that made my week. That was otherwise, uh, it, it has been a difficult one in terms of getting, uh, really passionate emails from folks. Uh, I did spend some time, I've spent much of the last couple of weeks, uh, working on getting to know TAF better. I, I did a tour with, um, with TAF at Saheli and, um, TAF offices. We'll talk more about that when we get to that, um, that action item. Um, I, as I said, I have a, a doodle poll that I have, uh, first, um, as a way to center the, the, uh, voices of, of black indigenous, um, families of color have sent out to those communities, uh, to, it's, there's something like 200 potential meeting times. You suggest the location, I come to you, um, and I'm engaging with community in that way. And I've had seven people sign up so far and, um, had a number of those meetings already. Uh, had the opportunity to be interviewed by, along with, um, uh, Superintendent Juno and Director DeWolfe by two native students from the Shakachib, uh, program at Nathan Hale, which was incredibly inspiring and, uh, really grateful to hear from them how much that, that class means to them. Uh, was able to attend the MLK celebration at Mount Zion, um, put on by Seattle Colleges, which was incredibly inspiring that such a historic, uh, was the first time I'd had the opportunity to, to be in that historic place and experience, uh, that historic community and, uh, was really honored to be able to witness that and be part of it. Um, had a good conversation with PE teacher, um, uh, this week around class size caps and, um, plan to be looking more into that. Got to see some of the new, uh, food items that we got to taste, uh, roll out into some elementary schools and heard really positive feedback from, in particular, one of the, uh, preschool teachers about how well that food is being received. So, maybe some of the, the kids that I volunteer with can start eating lunch again. Um, and then, uh, I did want to, uh, note that I heard, um, I'm hearing loud and clear all these messages about ethnic studies and I'm particularly focused on the, the national Black Lives Matter, uh, focus on black studies in particular. And, and I want to talk more about that with the NAACP Youth Coalition and I appreciate your presence here. Appreciate you staying here. I know it's a lot of time. Um, I'm very familiar, as you may have heard earlier, with the difficulties of rolling out curriculum into buildings, um, that is intended to authentically represent a community as is the case with Since Time Immemorial. We have a lot of work to do, even once we do get the curriculum. So, I hope that with Since Time Immemorial that we are paving the way, uh, for, but I, I, we need to work harder and push harder and I'm in that, that work with you. Um, I think most of the rest I will leave for, uh, later. Oh, I did want to note, um, I do not know, I'm very interested in this idea of having to reauthorize the Black Lives Matter resolution every year. I believe, um, we will check in with, with, um, the, our, our legal minds, but I believe that because it's a resolution, that it's only annual authorization and so that means we need to talk more about what does that look like in policy? That probably plays into the, um, anti-racist organization, um, policy that I believe will be coming through, uh, next month. Um, and I think some of you had a chance to review that so we can talk about maybe that where there's some interplay there.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Director Mack?
Good evening. Um, I want to give a huge, uh, thank you to the staff that stayed up all hours of the night to deal with the snow event, uh, up at 3:00 AM, having meetings to plan whether or not we call a two-hour delay or whether or not we cancel school. And I, I really appreciate the work that went into that. Um, so thank you. Um, and, uh, I also noticed that there really wasn't a lot of, um, late buses or accidents and students were safe. And so, thank you for all of that work, especially the middle-of-the-night work that was required. Um, also, I, uh, I appreciate, as always, all of the folks that come down to ta, testify and write in. As Director Harris said, and I know Director Hampson has said before too, we get a flood of emails, um, reading everything and incorporating it in my thinking, um, and appreciate, uh, that you take the time because I know that it takes time and, um, your voices matter. So, thank you for coming, um, on all the different topics and all the perspective that you're bringing. I especially want to, um, uh, mention, uh, and thank Lucia and Adam from the Center School talking specifically about that school's budget and the challenges that, um, it's facing in terms of not having the mental health counselors, um, having to pick between some of the arts classes and AP classes, et cetera, and that, um, I'm looking forward to more robust conversations in our, uh, WSS and our planning for the budget for next year to ensure that our schools have, um, sufficient budget to provide the robust offerings that our students deserve. And I do not, uh, unfortunately, I don't have anything scheduled for community meetings. We're talking about doing community meetings together between, uh, Director Rankin, uh, who's new to Ops Committee, welcome, and Director, um, why is my brain just blanking? Hersi, thank you. I just, you're sitting here and my brain, my brain just blanked for a second. Director Hersi, we were talking about having some joint meetings together. Um, uh, we don't have those scheduled yet, but looking forward to those happening soon. Um, and that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Mack. Director Rivera Smith?
Hi, thank you, thank you. Good evening. Um, I also want to say thank you to our Green Lake students who were here earlier. Um, nothing warms the heart like seeing our students embody that value of helping others. And it's one of my schools in my district, so I look forward to visiting them, um, as soon as I get the chance. I had the pleasure of visiting with Robert Eaglestaff last week, um, sat down with Principal Campbell there and had a really great, um, time there. Really learned a lot about what she's working on there and really respect the work she's doing. Um, as far as restorative justice practices and culturally responsive teaching, she gave me a book, Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain, which I look forward to digging into. Um, and I'm, I'm working on meetings at Sacagawea, McDonald, John Stanford, and Interagency, which isn't in my district but very close, and I'm very interested in seeing what they, what's, um, happening at that school. Um, I also have a community meeting coming up. Is that me? Just me? Okay, maybe. Um, community meeting coming up in just 10 days on Saturday, February 1st, 3:00 to 5:00 PM at Green Lake Library. Sorry about, um, so that's, um, it's open to everybody, not just District 2, um, residents. Uh, I look forward to seeing you there. Uh, in other news, I have finally received, da-da-da, my new district phone. It's beautiful, I know, like all the sixth graders have. Um, and I, it's a phone phone. I, I, I think it's beautiful. I know Director Hersi went for the iPhone. Well, you know what? This thing's, this is tough. Um, so I love it, I chose it, I want it, and, um, I hope you can call me on it. The, the number is also on my new business card. I have cards officially. Um, I'm the last one to the show there, but I have them now. It has my district phone number on it and also has my URL to, for my meet-me page to schedule meetings with me. You go to this website, you'll see my, you'll see my calendar that I see and you'll see when I am, um, either sleeping, eating, or doing nothing else. So, please make appointments with me. I would love to come to where you are. Like I said, please visit that. And, um, that's also, um, I don't know if it's on the website yet. It's basically doodle.com/directorRivera-smith. Pretty easy to remember, um, or come grab a card from me if you want. But either way, um, I look forward to using that to be out in the community and meet with you, um, at your leisure. Thank you for that. Um, also, I've been, I began working along with Director DeWolfe here on a couple of items. Uh, we are reviewing and expanding our green goals, our district's green goals, um, because we want to build upon that and build upon the energy from all of our students and families around, you know, making us, making a livable planet for us. Also are working on, um, we're working on the issue that came up a few months back about, um, students being able to miss school for civic engagement activities, um, because there is definitely, um, a belief in some of us that that's something we should be able to do and have an excuse absence for that. And we want to make that happen. So, we are working along with, um, district staff to see what we can, what we can do there. Um, so, more, more coming soon, yeah. We're, we haven't forgotten about that and that's really important to us. So, um, that, and I just want also, again, like other directors have said here tonight, thank you so much to everybody who emails. There's a lot of them, a lot of emails, really passionate, really thoughtful emails. I'm sorry we don't, we, we can't get back to all of them. And just so you understand, we are not allowed to reply all if, if we get an email from somebody because that creates like an, an official meeting, which we can't do. So, sometimes it's hard to know if you got an answer or not. Sometimes it might feel like someone's better suited for that, so we leave it and we wait, but we never really know if you got a reply. So, don't, don't feel bad pinging us again, um, because it's probably that we just didn't have a coordination going on and didn't know who was reaching out, who was responding. Um, because it, it kills me that some people out there aren't getting responses because I, 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 none of us want you to feel like your email goes into a void and it goes into just, you know, the abyss. So, um, again, feel free to reach out and thank you to everybody who comes out and gives testimony at these meetings. It's not easy, I know. It's not easy to sit up there or here and to talk and to speak eloquently. Um, it takes a lot of guts. And I, I want you to also, please, remember to respect all of our speakers. We're not all going to agree. Um, I kind of have my own personal policy that I'm going to clap for everybody whether or not I agree with you because I appreciate and respect that you've come up to speak to us. And, um, I just want to know that everyone out there is being respected by the audience also and being, so we keep it a safe space. Uh, we definitely want everybody to feel that they are wanted and accepted when they come up to speak with us. So, um, thank you for that. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Director Vera Smith. And I'll be quick too. Tonsi Okimalpi Simnitisi Nikason. Um, just again, thank you. My name is Young Buffalo Leader in, uh, in my traditional Cree language and so thank you for being here. Um, I just want to share, uh, some really exciting news and, and certainly some deep and profound gratitude that I have for both our facilitator Nancy Locke, SPS staff like Chief Podesta, Richard Best, as well as teachers and community members, um, for continuing to engage and participate on the Student and Community Workforce Agreement Task Force. Today, this morning, I was up early for our final meeting, um, to prepare recommendations that we'll be presenting to the board. Uh, we've been working on that for over the past four months. We're really excited about kind of this, um, commit, taking our commitment to equity and our strategic plan and thinking about ways that we can operationalize it in other parts of our work, particularly in our workforce development and our CTE programs here at Seattle Public Schools. And so, like I said, on March 18th, we will be presenting the recommendations to the board. Um, and I know, um, certainly I think Chief Podesta would probably be okay having a one-on-one or just if you have any more questions that, um, certainly don't feel answered. Um, I just wanted also, uh, thank, I know Angelina's in the audience, so thank you. You, you were at our, um, meeting last, uh, last Saturday and will be, actually be at the Student Advisory Meeting again on the 1st of February to share the, the recommendations and, and to get feedback again to, uh, again, we're just really moved by the participation of last time and so we're really looking forward to presenting what we have. Uh, I think it's a really good product and I think it's certainly something you're going to be proud of. So, um, thank you for making that work. Uh, I went to Meany Middle School to vi, visit with the ASB Club and the Drama, uh, Drama Department, the Drama Class, I guess, uh, last, uh, before our last meeting. And so, one of the things I heard at the ASB cl, class, which was filled with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, um, they said they wanted more LGBTQ history in our schools. And so, um, this Tuesday, I met with Lisa Love, who is our, um, Health and LGBTQ Education Manager. And so, we're, we're trying to get creative and so we'll have probably something to report, uh, in the coming months. Um, but really, really grateful that, um, it's really helpful if students are speaking and telling us what they want as opposed to feeling like we're kind of driving things. And so, um, hopeful it would be really responsive to their needs. Uh, and, and again, also, it's Seattle, uh, grateful to Seattle MLK Organizing Coalition as well as Directors Rankin and Hersi for honoring and observing MLK Junior's Life and Legacy this week at Monday's, uh, Annual MLK Rally in March at Garfield High School. Uh, and, um, I, I know that it's been a little bit time since it's, it has passed, but, um, the incredible work that our nurses and, and our health folks did in our district to make sure that we had all of our kids vaccinated per state law. And I think, um, it was heroic effort. And so, um, one of the things I'm going to, hopefully starting to be instituting in our executive sessions is to write some thank you notes. And so, I have the list of all of our nurses here. There's less than probably 75 and was hoping we could just sign thank you cards for our nurses. Um, and then lastly, uh, today is my birthday and I want to actually dedicate, particularly, um, my mom, um, calls me every birthday really early, um, when I'm still sleeping. Um, so I'm actually going to read a poem. This is from the Shakachib Program and if you were here early, you heard Gail Morris, the Native Education Program Manager. Um, Shakachib Classroom produces a book each year of poetry from our native students. And so, I'm going to just go read a poem. It's called "My Mom." And this is to my mom and, and we'll go from there. "I see a beautiful smile blooming to," oh, let me just back up. This is by Elizabeth Hayes, who is Lakota Sioux. It's called "My Mom." "I see a beautiful smile blooming to life across her features. I hear her reassuring words coaxing me to be happy. I feel her warmth spread across my body as she gives me a hug and kiss goodnight. I smell the sweet smell of her perfume lingering in the room reminding me that she was, that she was here. I taste every home-cooked meal she's made bursting in my mouth. My mom raises me up and without her, I would be nothing." So, thank you. And, and again, thank you. Um, I want to, I, I know we have a ton of work to do tonight, so I want to just ask directors if you need a, uh, health break, if you will, or if you would like to go right into our action items. I know we're, if we did like a 10-minute biology break and however else you need to handle it yourself. We will be back in 10 minutes, recess.